Okay, so I'll call select board meeting to order on July 10th at 6:30 PM. Everyone's here except for Al Hamilton. Hi, everybody. We haven't done a Zoom meeting in a while. Okay, so this, so the first hour is going to be just us and then advisory is going to join us at 7:30. So they'll have to call their meeting to order also. The tricentennial committee is about, at least a piece of them are about to join us. So they will call their meeting to order. Okay, um, so I'm going to turn, the first topic is, we've talked about this before, which is to again, try to streamline some of the committees is to reduce the scholarships and stewardship committees from seven to five. So we've got some information that was in our packet as far as their genesis. And I'm going to turn this one over to Sam for a discussion.
Thanks. As I looked at those historical records of these two committees, it seems to me it's worth updating those to actually have a specific charge for each committee, which we don't seem to have for either of those. And to, as part of the process, to reduce the number of members from seven to five for them, as I think the committees have requested. And also on stewardship, my proposal would be to actually make those five basically citizen-at-large positions, because we run into issues with where we've had designees from different boards on committees where the boards didn't choose to appoint people, which created quorum problems and so forth. And so what my proposal would be is to make the stewardship members five individuals at large. And I guess where I'm headed is that I'm working on a proposed charge. And I would plan to circle back with the chairs of stewardship and scholarship to outline the proposal and give them a chance to provide input or whatever. And then deal with this in more detail at our next meeting on the 16th. But it seems to me it's worth specifically updating the charge so there's clarity in terms of what we expect. And then again, making it easier to get people appointed to the committees with at-large members, which stewardship, or excuse me, scholarship already has. And the bottom line is this would not change any of the current participants in either of these committees. So those folks who've already appointed five people for each of those committees. So there's no change for those at this point. And if vacancies occur, there may be changes, but that's down the road somewhere. So anyway, that seems to me to be moving in the right direction. And I'll follow up with folks as appropriate and come back to the topic on the 16th.
Okay, so before we comment, let me just clarify something. I just got a text from Patty Fiori. So she's questioning why we're not discussing reducing the pilot pain pilot committee from seven to five. And that's because that's a bylaw committee and that's going to be done at the special town meeting, Patty. This is different. These were ad hoc committees appointed by the select board. So we do these differently than we're going to do the pilot committee. So we have not forgotten the pilot committee. It is planned to be reduced from seven to five at special town meeting. Okay, so Sam's outlined a plan for reducing these to seven to five, making them just general members, et cetera, running this by each of the chairs of the committees, getting their buy-in and coming back to us next Tuesday. Is that sound like a plan to everybody? See Andrew nodded.
Yes.
No objections.
Marguerite?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so Sam, you're on.
Okay, thanks. I'll follow up.
All right. Okay, so who, do we have Patty and Jenny in our audience, Vanessa?
Yes.
All right, can you bring them both over?
Yeah.
You can bring Dawn over too, if you want to. That'd be, well, I gotta be careful though. So there's how many on the committee? Seven? So four?
No, five. So this is a quorum.
Okay. Well, it's a seven-member committee, right?
That's right, yes.
Okay, so if we bring, why don't we just go ahead and bring Dawn over at the same time?
I did post a meeting just in case more of them came.
Yeah, so you did. So let's let, let's bring Dawn and Jenny and Patty over. Andrew's already here, so that's four out of seven. So then let him call his meeting to order. Once he's here. Hello, Jenny. There she is. Jenny, you're muted, you may want to be, but you are, just in case you don't know. Yeah, is Patty here?
Yep.
Yeah, there she is.
I have a ton of grandkids here. You want me muted?
I wish you could mute them, right?
No, she doesn't.
I don't have that feature on my grandchildren.
Dawn, can you hear us? We can, I see you, but we don't, well, I see that you're there, but we don't see you.
Yeah, I don't know why my, why my face isn't on there. But since we have a quorum, I will declare that the tricentennial committee is now in session.
All right, so welcome, tricentennial committee. So we're going to start off with a specific topic related to the tricentennial. Then we'll talk, then we'll turn, there you are, Dawn. Then we'll turn it over to you, Dawn, to talk about kind of where you stand, what you want us to know. We will make sure it's clear where we need two more members on your committee. While we're doing this, I hope we can recruit somebody from tonight's meeting. Okay, so Patty, do you want to talk? Do you want Jenny to talk?
I can start it. Jenny can do some input on the fundraising aspect of it. We kind of came up with this idea of creating engraved bricks and hopefully installing them at the Heritage Park Plaza. And it could be a great fundraiser. We were thinking of it for kind of an initial fundraiser with a kickoff possibly at Heritage Day in the fall. I've reached out to a couple of companies and, can we see this?
Yeah.
So I have an actual sample. I was a little concerned at the beginning about.
Set it up again.
Oh, sure. I was a little concerned in the beginning about the engraving on it. Is it, is it in focus, engraving on it?
No, it is.
So this particular company does laser engraving. And as it's engraved, it's filled with a product that melts from the laser and turns into glass so that it's an actual, it's flush on the top. So in other words, if you were walking on it, it's not going to wear away over time. Has a lifetime guarantee, I'm not sure whose life that is, but we can qualify some things. So what I think we're here to ask the select board is, can we do this? Because we recognize that that is kind of ripping up a portion of a newly installed park. Is that going to be a problem with you or with the DPW? I think our concept was that it would be in the middle portion of the plaza up at the top. And potentially include, I think Dawn was talking about maybe a monument or something to recognize the tricentennial. And maybe that could be a portion of it, or that could be the kind of rose stone in the middle with these, these bricks around it. And we would sell them for, I mean, my thought was, we sell them for $300 apiece, i.e. 300th anniversary. And in response for that, people get the engraved brick for whatever, you know, whatever they want engraved on it and installed in that park. We've also talked about adding this to our sponsors. And maybe Jenny can fill in a little bit more on that. Because we can also do logos. So if we have huge sponsors or something that want to come on board for the tricentennial, we can offer this as part of the sponsorship package. And it's a slightly extra fee to do a logo versus just text or a standard clip art thing. But it might, you know, it could be worthwhile. I just wanted to point out one other thing in the package of information that they sent me. They give you some ideas because this one that I have is, I just told them we were trying to match a standard brick color. But they've sent me some information. I don't know. That does not look in focus to me.
No, it's not focused for.
How do we do that? What do we do?
Back up a little bit.
Back up?
Yeah.
No?
Patty, get you out of the picture and hold the, hold the thing up there.
Okay, like that?
Hold it there for a second, see if it focuses. Nope, nope, doesn't do it. Sorry.
Oh. Crikey.
Amber's trying to focus, your fingers are perfectly in focus, but not the.
Yeah.
All right, okay, okay. This would be so much more easy if it was in person.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to show that. But they've given some suggestions in how you can use coordinating colors or, you know, different color bricks, maybe our engraved bricks are a different color than the actual red bricks that are in there to make it stand out. You can interject them with other color bricks, just to create more visual interest. What questions can I answer?
Patty, who would install these?
Well, I think, Sam, what our intention is, is that by selling them at $300 a brick, that we are including installation.
So we'd have a contractor, not DPW. And my concern is DPW is down a couple of people now and has a huge backlog of stuff. So I'm not eager to add workload to DPW. So if we can actually get a contractor to come in and do this, I think that would make it a lot more.
We also talked about getting it donated as a sponsorship from a local landscaper or mason.
Okay, good, that would be great.
So I think that that is part of the package that would be under the auspices of the tricentennial committee or fundraising committee to complete the project. And we were kind of thinking it could be really a kickoff fundraiser or something. Because I know that there's probably something in the works or a plan for some kind of a dedication for that park. And if we could just drag that out a few more months, it would be great if this could all be part of it.
I think the community house bricks were like $100, weren't they, or something like that?
Well, but that was their 100th anniversary, Sam. We have a 300th anniversary.
When we get to the thousandth anniversary, that's going to be very expensive. So did they actually sell a lot of them at $100 apiece?
Sold out.
How many was sold out roughly? Because they're, well, they're not, the whole thing at the community house is not covered with those bricks, I don't think.
No, it's, they have it on the walkway. I mean, we were thinking, I mean, just to throw out a number, we were thinking 100.
Yeah.
We can sell 100.
That's pretty good, yep.
100 quantity, yes. And also, this is our way of doing a grassroots campaign, you know, at that level. Because we're going to have sponsorships levels starting as high as $100,000. And all the way down to the brick at 300.
Brick is the lowest cost one, then.
Brick is the lowest cost.
Charlie, engineer, oh, sorry, Sam, go ahead.
Just, it sounds good to me.
Are they the same size as the bricks that are in there right now?
Yes. Yeah, it's a standard brick size. And like I said, they, I mean, they probably have a dozen or a dozen and a half different colors. So, you know, we can choose whether it's a mixy-matchy thing or it's contrast or it, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a possibility that maybe our signature sponsors, our high-level sponsors, get a different color. So they stand out and get placement in a particular area that's more visible.
Gold bricks, as it were.
Yes, there you go.
We should check with DPW. We should check with DPW just to be sure that there's not something going on there that we're not aware of and don't run into a problem with them, but.
So on this point, when this issue came up a while ago, and I did speak to Bill Kundoff about it, he had one concern that I've now located, I don't think has been completely run to ground. He just mentioned that when the bricks are set, they're usually put a sand material between the bricks to lodge them in. And there's a concern about where you take them out. Will they still be level when you put them back in?
Well, that would be part of it, sure.
Yeah. So I spoke to, it looks like I emailed with Bill about this back in May, and he said he was going to reach out to Greg Russell about this. But I don't know if he heard back, but it's worth following up with, with Bill, just to see. But I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. And masonry contractors do that kind of stuff all the time. I have a pack with bricks. And they replace some of them and they, they can re-level or whatever. And they do put, it's not even sand sometimes, it's some sort of an acrylic material, maybe to lock things together there.
So it sounds like everybody is viewing this favorably, if I am reading the room right here. The only thing I caution when I hear about different colors of bricks is to make sure that someone with a good eye, make sure that they look okay. And we don't have something that looks a little weird as far as a bunch of different colors of bricks.
We can build a yellow brick road here.
Maybe we should reactivate the park committee.
Oh, oh, yes. Volunteer.
Yes. Yes.
That would just need to, very like a two-year-long.
Let's not.
I'm not sure Andrew's scars have healed yet for that one.
Marguerite, Marguerite was the chair.
There's a little more there.
Most card. So no, let's not do that, Patty. We can get this without the committee.
Fabulous idea, maybe later. With the bricks, who makes the decision about where they go? Is it a band around the middle of it? Will the mason say put it on one end? I mean, I think Kathy has a really good point. You don't want it to look jarring to the eye, yes.
No, I, I think that, you know, and what we could certainly do is come back to the select board with a couple of comps of what it would look like. I think it totally depends on how many get sold. So, I mean, if you have 100, it, you might place them differently than if you had 200. And some of these that are, that I've seen in this brochure that we can't look at, it's not like every brochure, every brick, it, they're kind of every other brick or something to create a pattern. So there is a lot of different ways to do it. I think that's probably a decision for down the road. And, I mean, I could certainly help putting together a comp of what that would look like.
So maybe Patty, the first step is to go ahead and sell the bricks, right? See, I mean, we sell, just like you said, and then decide, you know, how to lay them out. Using the advice of someone that does this for a living, you know, getting a Greg Russell-like person, which I'm sure there's plenty of people in town that would help, would come and sit and help us, you know, figure this out. Then come back to us and say, this is, I mean, we sell, this is where, you know, we've, we've talked to someone. This is the best way we think they would look to keep it looking nice and not gaudy. And then we just do a final vote and say, we agree, go for it.
And confirm the plan with Bill Kundoff.
Absolutely, keep you involved all the way through, for sure.
So Andrew, are you going to reach back out to Bill Kundoff?
Yes, yeah, I will.
Okay, so Andrew's in charge here for coordinating with Bill.
Okay.
It sounds like fun, Patty. It sounds like if it's like in front of the community, I should kind of read them and it's, it's fun.
Yeah.
And you can also create a map of where they are so that, you know, whether you display that there, or maybe that's at the townhouse or something. But so that if there is 200 of them, you know, you have a map of where yours is.
Or we have a find-your-brick party.
Ooh, that's a cool thing. Maybe that's the dedication of it.
Exactly, that would be fun. Everybody who bought one could come and find their brick.
I nominate Marguerite to be the censor for language on the bricks.
Yes, how long a quote can you get on your brick? That's what I want to know.
War and peace, I think.
Yes, how many?
I think it says Army versus Navy, according to Jim Hegarty.
That's the one he wants to buy, yeah.
Well, I think it'd be lovely, memorial for children, for birthdays, for anniversaries, for businesses.
Yeah, school classes, anything. Yeah, you get, you can get actually quite a few characters. And I think the normal is that you can get up to three lines. So, yeah. Unless we're doing.
And 300 sounds like a good price. Everyone's okay with that price point?
I was kind of leaving, I made that suggestion just because it's the 300th anniversary. But I think that's under the auspices of the fundraising committee, which Jenny is handling. But I, I.
We feel good about the number. We feel really good about it. We think we'll be able to sell a lot. I've already talked to a lot of people who say, oh, count me in, count me in.
All right.
So. And we have an amazing.
She wanted some.
Yes. And we have an amazing group of phenomenal people that have joined the fundraising effort. And I think we're going to be truly successful. We had a meeting already and we plan to have another one at the end of July. We're working on our sponsorship package so we can officially kick off in the, by Heritage Day.
That's all very positive, that's great. All right, so it sounds like Patty and Jenny, you've got your green light to go forward with the, selling the bricks.
Thank you.
If you're.
If I could tune in for a second. This is an excellent first step. It's important, though, that the tricentennial committee, which has five members, all, the majority of which are, at least cover it in one of our public meetings to formally go ahead with this. Now, there's four members on, on here tonight. And there's been no objections, but I would suggest that an agenda item at our July 30th meeting will include a review of this and let the, the tricentennial committee duplicate the actions of the selectmen. There's several steps that have been talked about so far, talking to Bill, getting prices, I mean, getting availability and so on. I just think that it's important that we don't have two, two members of a five-member or a seven-member committee press on without the whole committee having formally reviewed it and approved it and have, have it be part of our record also. That's my suggestion and I will recommend it. It'll be an agenda item for our July 30th meeting. And also, excellent work. If you, if you can't help, then get out of the way. And Jenny and Patty, you better get out of the way because they're really, really doing an excellent job on this, this committee.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, so let's reiterate now for any of the public listening that we need two new members to this committee. We've had a couple of resignations for one good reason and one unfortunate reason. So we need two new members to, to step up to get the committee back to its full seven members. All right, so thank you, ladies. So Dawn, you're, you're here, you're still on. So why don't you take over now as far as does the overall tricentennial committee update?
Yes, thanks, Kathy. Dawn Morris on the tricentennial committee, 300. In accordance with the select board tricentennial committee charge dated April 10th, 2023, Deliverables Section Item 8, the following is an update on the actions of the tricentennial committee. The committee's first meeting was on November 2nd, 2023, and has met once each month since, except there were three meetings in March and we have met a total of 10 times. The initial work was to research other towns' recent celebration actions and events. Each member was assigned a few towns to contact. The result guided the committee to efficiently take the recommended early actions for the townwide celebration. I use the word efficient, efficiency, efficiently, because if we hadn't done this, we would have been spending a lot of time trying to think up what to do. But when we contacted the other towns, they made it very easy for us to pick and choose what works and what doesn't. We also created a list of over 125 self-pro organizations to approach for involvement. Submitted a town meeting warrant article to obtain $30,000 for seed money. That was in our, our charge, deliverable item number 2D. And of course, the article passed. We created a town survey for celebration ideas, and that's still a vibrant item. We wrote a tricentennial announcement letter, developed a tricentennial webpage. And most recently, researched branding efforts from other towns and created a 300th logo and tagline. You there, Vanessa?
Oh.
The committee approved this at our last meeting in, on June 20th. We set in motion actions to actions required to have a 501(c)(3) account for donations and income and sales and events. We're working to create a fundraising and parade subcommittee. And as you heard a little while ago, fundraising committee is in full swing. And the agenda for our next meeting on July 30th will include a discussion item on two additional actions, proposed actions. One would be to set up a a program of one or two people to interview self-pro senior citizens and be able to capture their memories of self-pro from a long time ago. And the second item is reaching out to, out to longtime self-pro residents for old photos, newspaper articles and similar pieces of history that we can share with the rest of the town. Would also like, at the end here, we're very grateful to Steve Valentine and John Kendall for their work on, on this committee. Both gentlemen decided not to be reappointed. We hope they will be able to participate as we get closer to 2027. So we will formalize this report, bring it before the committee on July 20th. The committee can approve it or modify it. And then we will formally submit it to, as required by our charge, to the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, and have that be a continued item throughout the next couple of years so that you and the townspeople are aware of our actions and our progress.
Excellent report. Anybody have any questions for Dawn?
Like the logo, it looks very nice.
Yes, it's great.
Can you put it back up again, Vanessa, if I can, if I can impose on, on everyone?
Hang on.
This is, this was a collaboration on the initial outstanding work that Patty did to help us. Not all of us are are that artistic, but I think this really nails it, the colors, the shape, the text. So you'll be seeing this and hopefully you won't be sick of it by 2027. You'll, you'll just want more.
Hey, Dawn, just a small picture of each of the committee members in each of the windows and the buildings there. Personally.
Okay.
Vanessa, I should have sent you a JPEG instead of a PNG, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ah, there we go, that's it, that's better.
I think it's lovely.
Looks great.
Andrew, any other comments for Dawn? I know you're on the committee, so you probably knew all this.
No, since I'm on the committee, I don't really have any questions because I know exactly what he's talking about, so.
Okay, you're up to it.
And, you know, Dawn also is doing a great job of serving as, as chair and keeping us organized together with Vanessa.
I'm just trying to keep up with you guys.
It's very nice to have him back, for sure. And yes, Jenny and Patty are pistols on this, so they're doing a great job. So Patty, you drew that logo?
Yes. Can, well, I drew it on the computer.
Yeah, I understand. Well, it's very impressive.
And draw it in a sketch pad, yeah, yeah. I created the logo, yes.
So, but Marguerite, anything else for the tricentennial committee before they adjourn?
No, I think anything we can do to help, let us know, because it's, it looks great so far.
So Dawn.
Thanks for your support.
Patty already knows this, but Mark and I, Andrew Faff, we visited face school today. They've got a new head of school and they've got a new board chair. So we went down to have a nice meeting about several things. So we went down to have a nice meeting about several things, and we made sure that we brought up the Tricentennial with them too. And then I connected Patty with them this afternoon, so that should, that should go forward, I hope. And they seem to be pretty excited. They actually gave us, Patty, a book that they put together about the history of Fay School, which is about 150 years old itself. So we've got that now too, if you want to use that for anything. But it was a very nice meeting. They, they both seem to like their jobs and be very interested in working with us on the Tricentennial.
I remember in 1966, and when they turned 100, and you know, there was, back then, the town was really small, so small things appeared to be bigger. There's so few people, and the school had, you know, significant imprint in the center of town. And I remember Ed Brooke, the Senator, US Senator from Massachusetts, was the keynote speaker. It's pretty cool.
Wow. Wow, wow, wow. That's impressive, too. Okay, so if there's no further comments or questions, Don, if you want to, you want to adjourn your committee, then we thank you for coming.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor? Morris, yes?
Martin's, yes.
Burns, Fury, yes.
Dennington, yes.
Thanks and good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I should have said the following at the start, so I'll say it now. This is a special meeting. This is not our normal two times a month meetings where you're doing this because after the end of every fiscal year, certain financial things have to happen very quickly before July 15th. So the meeting really is, the purpose of this is to meet with advisory and to approve certain interdepartmental transfers, and for them, if needed, to approve reserve fund transfers. It was not needed tonight for that, but they would have done that also. So that's why we're doing this. So that's why there's no public comment or some of the usual things. So I just want to make that clear. If anybody, the public's wondering why they don't see public comment on here. Our normal meeting is next Tuesday, which will be, which will include everything that it normally does. Okay, so the next few items are going to go fast, so we're going to probably get done before 7:30, so we'll take a quick recess until 7:30 if that's, if that happens, which I think is going. Okay, so the next one is, this is perfunctory, but we've now got to vote to to assign the MBTA Communities' Warrant Article that we expect to have on the Fall Warrant to the Planning Board for them to open their public hearing process. So can I have a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
So 4-0 to approve, handing it back to them.
Can I jump in here for two seconds? I went back and looked at the Department of Housing and Community Development original language on several of these definitions, and there are small word differences between what the state is using and what's showing up here. And in a couple of instances, such as the definition of affordable unit, the punctuation that the state has clarifies what goes with what, especially in relation to the word "both." And I'm just saying that I would like to sit with somebody on the planning board for 10 minutes and just make sure that that, that that language is clarified per the way the state does the definition. There was also another one where dwelling unit, the state called a residential dwelling unit, and there was another one where it was called, right on page one of the Article 36, it's called a dwelling, but the state's calling it housing, not dwelling. And I'd like to just sit with planning for just 10 seconds and just sort of say, I'm, I'd really like to be sure that the language is totally loophole-proof in the way that it's put together. Not to tell them how to do their job, but I just think there's some commas missing.
I think that would be.
The definition of affordable unit.
Grateful for that. I'm sure they want to get it as perfect as possible. I've got a call tomorrow. Marguerite with Mimi, so I can let her know that you would like to do that, so she can decide who's going to reach out to you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. I just, I just want to make sure that there's no holes in it.
That's typically the kind of thing that happens during the planning board's hearing process for this stuff, so ample opportunity to get that on the table, certainly.
Okay, just saying. Alright, thanks.
Alright, so the next one is to approve the timeline for submitting citizens petitions to the, for the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting. So what we've done recently is allowed citizens petitions up to a reasonable time that is needed to actually get the warrant done, which was 30 days. That's what we've done recently. Remember Jay telling him and his totes that citizen petitions can come in anytime, but then you've got to set a practical deadline because you've got to get the warrant done. So we've used 30 days in the recent past. Does anyone want to use the 30 days? Make that clear? Anyone want to use anything other than 30 days?
Yeah, I think we need it, as we talked last time. And a question for Mark is, was 30 days sufficient last time around from a production standpoint? Does that work for us?
Yeah, it's, it's tight, but it works. I think, you know, in hindsight, Sam, 30 business days probably would have, would have been better, but, but we can make it work. That'll be, that'll be August 31st if you stick with the 30 days.
Do we do 30 business days?
Well, I mean, the bylaw is 30 days.
Okay.
So that's, that's the issue. I mean, so, but I think that, you know, we have to post it by, by law by the 16th. Your second meeting in September will be the 17th, so we're going to have to probably have a special meeting just to approve the final warrant, and we're going to look to get final language from, from all article sponsors no later than September 3rd. And, you know, and I think that we should be, you know, in pretty good shape, getting everything done with the printer and getting everything all set, you know, within that timeframe. So yeah, so 31st, if we do a 30-day, that should work for us.
Mark, has there been any complaint from residents that that's not enough time?
I have not heard that, you know, there was an issue with that. So, and again, you know, a lot of times, the citizen petitions will come in. There's nothing that can really be done. They need to be, you know, put into the warrant as submitted. So, you know, really, there's not a lot of changing, if, you know, when they come in.
I currently need 10 signatures for a citizen's petition for a special, so it's not heavy lifting to get those signatures, for, for one thing. I mean, Mark's got to have time to get the warrant to the printer and get it done, and so 30 days makes sense to me.
Kathy, is it 10 for special also, or is it more for special?
Um.
I thought it was more for special.
I think you need more for special.
Okay, so it's either 10 or 100.
I think.
It's 10 for one of them.
10 for annual, now being four.
And then 100 for a special.
I think it's 100 for special.
Alright, but still, you know, 100 is still not that hard to get. Stand the transfer station for a couple hours, and you have them. Okay, so everybody okay with making a motion to clearly state that a citizen's petition has to be submitted on or before August 31st, 2024, if it is going to be on the warrant for the special town meeting on September 30th?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Sam?
Yes.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Cook is aye. So 4-0 to, to reiterate that citizen's petitions have to be submitted no later than August 31st.
So I'll circulate that notice out to all the department heads, boards, and committees, and also we'll, we'll post something up on the website.
Let Mr. Hagerty know, too?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so there's that one. So this one is simply changing a town in this IMA that we've signed a while back from Sterling to, who are we changing it to, Mark?
Shrewsbury. Uh, Shrewsbury.
Okay, or dead, Mr. Shrewsbury, maybe?
Yes.
Yes.
Spencer, sorry.
Yeah, Spencer, Spencer was the lead community in this, in the Stormwater Consortium. And the memo from Mr. Kanduff is that, based on the retirement, a retirement in Spencer, they're looking to shift the lead community to the town of Shrewsbury. Nothing else changes in this at all.
And Bill has recommended that we do this, so it's good enough for me. Anybody have any problems with the printing?
This is the first time I've, I don't know what the central Massachusetts regional storm were.
Neither did I, and this came up. And I'm not sure you're going to get an answer on this.
Mark, do you know, or Sam?
Uh, no, not specifically. I got a general idea, but I don't want to guess.
I can't speak to the specifics of it, and I don't believe that no, Bill is not with us, so.
So we're not changing the agreement. Our change is the lead community. The agreement is signed. We're not signing a new agreement. We're not adding to it, so it's something that already exists, Andrew, with your.
I know, just, I just.
I know, I know. But, so I, I can't say anymore than Bill says we should do this. Is that good enough for you? You want to wait?
I'm fine.
I'm okay with it. Bill says it's okay.
Bill says it's okay. It's okay. Sam, you want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the change in the Stormwater Agreement as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Since we know nothing to discuss about this. Okay, roll call vote, Sam?
Yes.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Andrew?
Yes.
Cook is aye, 4-0. So we approve changing from Spencer to Shrewsbury. Alright, um. So Mark reminded me that we hit, when we set the calendar for the rest of the Select Board meetings for the year, we, for October, we picked the first and the 15th, which is the first and third Tuesdays, but the night before is the special town meeting, and it might carry over to the first. So we, for two reasons, probably should change the first meeting and go maybe second and fourth for October, if that works. Does not conflict with any, either of the Jewish holidays or October. I triple-checked that. So I can't think of any reason not to go to the 8th and the 22nd.
That works for me.
Works for your calendar. Marguerite?
Yep, that's fine. Thank you for catching that.
Sam?
That's fine.
Okay, alright, so that's official that we're going to go the 8th and the 22nd for October, so we don't conflict with special town meeting. Even if it goes one night, you're probably not going to want to come back again second night, right? Okay, so that's all we need to do before we start the joint meeting with advisory. So Vanessa, let's just, what time is it? 7:13. So we've got 17 minutes, so why don't we just have a brief pause, and then we'll come back at 7:30. Is that okay for everybody?
That's for 15 minutes.
Yes, so I'll see you in 15 minutes. Alright, so let me say that again. Select Board is back in session at 7:30 PM.
And I call the Advisory Committee meeting to order at 7:30 PM?
Tim is over there too now. So welcome, advisory. It's always nice to see you guys. So to tease this up as far as what we're doing first, and this is an annual process. So at the end of the year, Brian and Carla take a look at all the budgets to see if any have overdrawn their budget for the year. And if they are, we make, they, they look at places that have money left in them, and we do inter, inter, I-N-T-E-R, departmental transfers that have to be approved by both Select Board and Advisory. Any reserve fund transfers, as everyone knows, are solely under the bailiwick of advisory, but they are not tonight. So all we're going to do tonight is inter departmental transfers. Marcy, you're on the screen, and I don't know what everybody else sees, but it's, it's very strange looking. Anyway. So does Marcy look normal to everybody?
She has a blurred background, which is an option, but she, she looks fine.
Yeah. Looks fine on my end. She has white hair on my end, so Marcy, I know what you look like. Okay, so that's what we're doing. Andrew, I'll let you say your two cents, and Brian's going to explain this to us. But everything that's being proposed to come out tonight is coming out of the health insurance benefits budget, which always usually has a little money left over within a year because it's a, he puts a little extra in there because he doesn't know what's going to happen during the year. So he's taken it all out of that. And this is truly impressive for those that are really focused on how much we're moving. So if you set aside the $14,000 for the fire department match for the grant they got, this is only eight $10,000 in a budget of, you know, almost $60 million. So this is pretty impressive. That's all we have to do to, to get rid of the few overdrafts. And if you look at the ones we're doing, forget the tax title, that's, that's nothing. That's 58 bucks. We know why we did two of those. We intentionally paid Laura Davis more money because all the work she was doing with the 40B, so we knew that was going to happen. And the Assistant Treasurer, we understood why that happened. That was a retroactive increase that had to happen. So the only one, what?
Brian or Kathy or somebody, could you put up the spreadsheet just on screen for everybody, whoever has it?
So I'm looking at, this is a spreadsheet that was in everybody's packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one pager.
The legal, there was a matter that we had to engage outside legal counsel, not our normal town council. That's, that's a fixed fee for a matter that had to be dealt with. So this is, I think, Brian, and I know Carla's not here, but I hope she's listening to this. This is pretty impressive again. So Andrew, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I think that as we, as advisory knows, the firefighter match, Chief Achilles had given us the heads up at the beginning of the year. We had earmarked, I think, $25,000 for that. We didn't officially approve a reserve fund transfer. We kind of set that aside, but it's only $14,000 at the end of the day, which was why we set it aside because we thought he could absorb some of his budget. But yeah, so I think it was another pretty good year for, besides the school, large reserve fund transfer for the mold remediation, we did pretty good surprise items, so, you know, handling them.
Were there any reserve fund transfers other than for the school mold remediation?
That, I believe, is the only one we approved, Brian, keep me honest on that. And we, we put in our advisory letter to town meeting, the one with Laura Davis, that was kind of a heads up that we got. And a couple other ones that were able to be absorbed into the, the budget, so nothing was too much of a surprise.
Brian, anything you want to say to?
I'll just say it was a very good year. This is the minimalist money compared to the budget, and thank you for the department heads that worked with, to minimize these, these necessary transfers at the end of the year. Very good year. And we're going to have a pretty good return on unused money in, in the budgets for what we call the turnbacks for 63024. So that's not for tonight, but just a heads up, it's going to be a substantial amount of money. So, good job.
Yep. This is the classic, no news is good news.
So that means, guys, hopefully we'll have a decent free cash number to start next year, and who knows what we'll use it for, but it's always good to have it.
We know we'll use it.
Alright.
So anybody else from Select Board, any questions on what we're about to vote on? The debt stuff, he's just moving around from one account to another, long-term to short-term, et cetera, so there's, there's no meaning in that piece of it. Andrew, you want to see?
Yeah, if any advisory has any questions, I just want to, can, do you have the, Vanessa, do you have it from the packet you could put on the screen? Just the approval document one?
Was that in the Select Board packet? I don't have any of the advisory documents.
It was sent, it was sent in a, Brian sent in an email.
Let me see where to find it.
Brian, I made you a co-host in case you could share it.
I have, I have it as well if we need it, so.
You got it ready to pop up, Howard?
Yeah, it's on my other screen.
I got it here, too.
There it is.
Yep. There we go, yeah. So Brian, just the interest part, just, I mean, I kind of understand it, but why don't you just explain it real quick, just? Yeah, it might be on mute.
There you go. Had to find it. Yeah, so basically. There you go, had to find it. Um, yeah, so basically, this is kind of a um, a wonky thing, but the, we pay certain thing. We had amount of money in short-term debt. And we paid really long-term interest on that for these new projects. Um, so the D O R makes us at the end of the year, just make it right to um, categorize these things correctly. So that's all it is. It's not money overspent. It's not like the twenty-four thousand. It's just literally moving them into the right accounts. That's it.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so it doesn't sound like there's any further questions. So I'll make the motion to approve a hundred forty-six thousand, uh, so I'll do select board first, Andrew, okay? So I'll make a move, motion for select board to approve a hundred forty-six thousand, one sixty-two point twenty-one uh, transfers as shown on the spreadsheet, which will be attached to our minutes, um, to the accounts that are listed on the spreadsheet. Roll call vote, uh, Marguerite?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook as I, so four zero per select board. Andrew?
And I could make the motion that uh, advisory approves the uh, interdepartmental transfers are a hundred and forty-six thousand, a hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-one cents as shown in the year-end transfers document uh, as part of our minutes. For a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, um, Marcy?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
And Andrew is aye.
Okay, so, thank everybody.
Thank you very much.
Um, so since we were all together, Andrew and I thought we would take advantage of being together to talk about a couple more um, substantive things that you guys, advisory has talked about, um, select board a little bit, but not as much, um, which are potentially doing, or at least recommending, trying to get interest in increasing the CPA surtax that we have today from one percent to three percent. And then second, talking about possibly creating a separate stormwater enterprise fund like the water fund, so whole separate entity has its own P and L, et cetera. So um, I know advisory has discussed both of these. So Andrew, you wanna take the lead on the CPA surtax?
Yeah, so advisory had looked at it, I think it was uh, last year or the year before, um, just as one of our summer projects to kinda understand it. And you know, the, the match was a little bit better back then. I think we were in the high thirty to forties. The thought process was at the time that we're currently at one percent, moving to three percent, not only do you have, you know, go from one to three, so you triple your amount of money. Um, there's a second and third round of matching from the state that kicks in when you're at three percent and only at three percent. Uh, which is roughly another ten percent or so of match. Um, we're, we're, we're pretty low on the, it's called the deciles, which is the, the, the different levels get more, more match. We're a little low because of our you know, net worth of the uh, average taxpayer. Um, but that being said, it's still a match of money from the state. Uh, the thought process is if there is significant amounts of capital project or projects that would have been funded, uh, most likely by the general fund um, or debt service that would hit the town budget. Um, and we could move those eligible projects into being funded by CPA dollars. Um, we would get more bang for our buck with the match, right? But I think that's the most important caveat that personally, I don't wanna increase taxes unless there's an offset, right? So unless that, you know, we can kinda agree on the strategy with capital and the select board and with CPC that the strategy, you know, should be for this two percent to find items that, you know, most likely, um, you know, are, are able to be approved, um, in terms of, you know, being CPA eligible. And that would have, uh, you know, that'd be funded by the general fund, town projects, et cetera. Um, to kinda ease some of the burden and add a little bang for the buck, but that's, uh, I think that's the, the work that needs to be done if we wanna move forward.
So I would add to that, um, the process to doing this is, um, you do it one of two ways. It has to end up um, being voted on by the town at a town election. It could be November, doesn't have to be May. So you could do it this November. To get it there, you do it one of two ways. You either collect five percent of voter signatures or you go to town meeting, um, and get town meeting to vote positively to put this on the ballot. And then when you get to the ballot, you have to have a positive vote there too. So you'd have to have two processes to get it there. Um, a couple years ago, Andrew and I, when I was on advisory with Andrew, we went to CPC when Andrew Mills was the chair. And we never talked to Andrew about it, and he was very excited that advisory was even entertaining this. I mean, he was really excited. He couldn't, he really was surprised that he would even look at it. So we went, um, they took a straw vote that night. And it was a um, unanimous vote to support it. The only issue they had is how to get it on the ballot. I think, if I recall, Andrew, they preferred to go through town meeting to get there versus going to, um, you know, getting five percent of signatures and getting there. So I did, I believe that they, they preferred, uh, they thought town meeting was the better route to getting on the ballot, but they were all for it. Um, the CPC today, um, is, is not of the same mind, at least so far. Um, and I'm not, I'm not sure why, um, so it, you know, they need to support this. Um, you, you wouldn't wanna go to town meeting without them supporting it. Is this not select board or advisory thing? We've got, somebody else has gotta leave this charge to, to decide to wanna do this. I guess select board could put, could put the warrant, um, article on the warrant. But if, if we do the signature route, somebody's gotta take charge of that. So I'm not sure who that would be. Not sure it's a time to do it. Uh, we've got the big school project coming up, but, and plus trying to explain this to, um, you know, a citizen that's not necessarily um, willing to with what's going on with taxes, it just wants to keep their tax bill down. It, you know, it's hard to explain that we're, we're trying to actually reduce your taxes. We're trying to get more state money in um, to um, help us pay for these things. We're trying to use the CPA money to pay for things we're gonna have to pay for one way or the other. If we had had a bigger match, um, before the Algonquin, um, athletic complex was approved, we could have used a lot of CPA money to pay for that, but we didn't. As you know, you guys didn't support that because of that reason. You wanted to wait a year till we could try to get the CPA surtax increase and use some of this money. The last time Andrew and I looked at the numbers as far as what we thought we generate, we go from about half a million dollars of CPA money a year between the local collection and the state collection to about a million six fifty or a million seven, um, of collections between the two. And again, the emphasis is, if you go to three percent, you get this bonus that you don't get if you just do the one percent. So it's not three times the state money, it's three times plus. So, you know, every little bit counts. Um, the match will all depend on, um, you know, the funds that came in that year from the various deeds that got recorded. That's where this CPA money comes from. So you never know, it, it does bounce up and down. More towns get in it than that, that dilutes a pool too. But there's, you know, as far as I know, there's still gonna be a CPA period, so there's always gonna be some state money coming in, um, regardless. So we just thought we thought out there tonight to see if there seems to be an appetite to at least sit down with CPC again, try to go through this, um, and, um, you know, show a spreadsheet, show projects that we think would qualify that. We know we're gonna have to do one way or the other, um, and, and to see what they think. But it would be helpful to understand, you know, what this group thinks first, um, before we, we go to that step.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, my calculation, I pulled it up that I did it originally, um. Had we done three percent, uh, originally when we voted this, but I think lost by a handful of votes, I think it was pretty close, like fifty-one, forty-nine, um, the first time around. Uh, we would have, we would have had another five point two million dollars just in match from the state. So, you know, I think we, you know, left a lot of match money on the table. Again, it, yeah, we, we, we wanted to make sure. Also would lower our taxes on the other side, but, so I think there, but I'll pause there. Why don't we start with advisory, if anybody has any comments?
Only comment I have is I think, I think an organized discussion with CPC would be worthwhile to understand the best path to move forward. Um, I do think there's a lot of money left on the table, um, and we've talked about it in advisory and Andrew's great at explaining it, so.
Yeah, and I think Kathy and I are just trying to right now say, you know, does advisory and select board think this is a good idea to move forward? And then we can start the conversation with CPC and starting, you know, the other stakeholders, you know, whether it's Affordable Housing Trust, CHOPC, you know, Open Space, you know, I'll go down the list, Recreation on supporting it as well. But I'm, I'm figured I should start here, but uh, Larry, I think you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, I'm just sure, curious, being the, the sort of the new guy in terms of understanding how the revenue and expenses work. Uh, you know, how? I don't wanna put you on the spot for a number, but how likely is it that, that this would end up being at, at, at least revenue neutral from a real estate tax point of view? In other words, you know, are there, are there the expenses that we're projecting right now and that we can see going forward that uh, could be, uh, could use the CPC money? Because I know that there are restrictions on how that money is used, um, that would make up for the, the two percent increase. Well, the, the three hundred percent increase actually, in, in the, uh, the amount, uh, that's, uh, being.
Yeah, I think, I think there was some, um, I had put together a preliminary list of a bunch, um, that I thought could be eligible and Ben saw, you know, there's someone there that may, only portions were, or may not be, but um, like, I looked at the capital plan, I looked at the master plan, I looked at the recreation plan and the schools capital plan. Um, and you know, there's, um, the cleanup of Frick Neck Hill could have been eligible. That was about two and a half million. Um, South Union School, um, needs about three or four hundred thousand dollars of renovations. Um, you know, obviously affordable housing, there's a bunch of things we've looked at doing there, but that, that could uh, also be there. Um, Lundblad Field, uh, you know, the dog park. Um, the school, nearie field rebuilds is part of, and, and the playground build is part of the school project. Um, MSBA did not reimburse for fields, so you could use CPA for that. The recreation plan, a lot of it is recreation, but you know, um, um, I think Sam had Route Nine pedestrian bridges, which have been kind of done, uh, with CPA funding as long as it's dedicated to um, pedestrian, it's not technically a sidewalk. There's choke turf, nearie field turf. While you can't buy the turf, you can use CPA funds to do some of the supporting stuff. Um, and the underlayment, uh, under the gravel, et cetera. Um, part of the recreation plan is, you know, South Union Playground Replacement, that's three hundred thousand. Um, you know, so, um, community center as well is there, um, who, some of that's probably eligible. Um, so I mean, you know, it's certainly, I, certainly I estimated that there would be enough to use up that extra two percent for the foreseeable future. Um, but again, that's just at a, at a high level.
I'm sorry, how much does the one percent represent in dollars right now?
Well, it's about a hundred dollars.
Yeah, so if, if we went right now, the average single-family house, nine hundred and one thousand, um, you, the first hundred thousand dollars exempt, so everybody pays about a hundred and eleven dollars. So you go from a hundred and eleven dollars for a single-family average to three hundred and thirty-four, so it'd be two hundred dollars.
And.
But not, it's certainly not as big as our usual tax at this. But it's not, you know, insignificant.
How much is that in terms of total, total dollars to the town, one percent?
So.
Five hundred.
If we.
We get right now in total, it'd go to about a million six, a million seven, based on.
Yeah, so.
Think the reimbursement rate is.
Okay, yeah, so based upon the FY twenty-three number, what's the reimbursement rate is, was better back then. That's calculation I did, I think it was about, we were about thirty-nine percent. So we, our surcharge was three hundred ninety-one thousand, the match was a hundred and fifty thousand to a total of five forty. If we went to three percent, that three ninety would go to um, one point one. And the match would be um, around six hundred thousand. We go from a thirty-nine percent to a forty-eight percent match uh, for a total like one point seven million. So roughly a one point two million dollar a year increase in the funds available.
And I think the match is great. It's the adding that two percent to whatever additional increases happen in a year, that's the harder thing to swallow down for, for residents.
The, the hardest part is not using that two percent on things that would lower your other side.
Right.
Right, and, and respectfully, the match keeps, seems to be, keeps going down. So at one point, i- if it keeps going down and the match becomes zero, we just raised everyone's you know, taxes by, by X, and we're not getting the match anymore, and the funds are still there and used, they're not lost, but the match is the real, is the real enticing thing, but there's no guarantee in that match.
It isn't, yes, the amount's not guaranteed, Howard, but the source of the funding for the match is um, real estate transactions, deeds. So there's a fifty dollar fee on a deed that gets um, registered or recorded that goes into this fund. So unless those transactions literally stop, um, completely, there's gonna be money going into the pot. It just, that pot, um, can shrink, it can get bigger, depends on the economy.
Mm-hmm. So, and the housing market as far as units on the market to sell has been shrinking, so uh,
Yeah.
For this, I'm just putting out the other side of it, what we have to.
Yeah.
What the, what the conversation will be from the, from the other side, so.
Yeah, and in the past, they've, they've in, added money on top of the, the surcharge funds that they get for the, the tax transfers, but. You know, again, that's not guaranteed. Who knows? I mean, I think the lowest I think we've ever gotten was seventeen or eighteen percent. Um, and the highest, of course, when we started, was a hundred percent, right? That was great, but, so, it's a I think it's more of a, is it worth having the conversation now, keeping it on a fall town meeting? Or trying to collect signatures for a fall or next spring ballot? Um, or with everything else we have going on, might this be something we slow play, start the conversations, check with CPC, or, or just kinda, you know, stop it altogether?
I think, a- a- as Marcy says, I think the next step is that conversation with CPC and, and you know, we can support this, but this is really their, their cause to, to, to champion.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be rather, it, you could do it, I guess, but I don't think you'd wanna do it. I don't think you'd wanna be at town meeting, if you're going to town meeting route, right? It's one thing, you could collect the signatures outside town meeting and then just do a vote on the ballot. But I just don't know, I don't think you would wanna go for it without the full support of CPC.
I agree.
Agreed. So do we wanna, wanna take a vote or a straw poll, um, from advisory and select board and whether or not we support continuing the conversation with CPC to see if they would support and what they would recommend for next steps? Does anybody disagree with that idea?
Sure. It makes sense. Andrew, I, I've listened to some of the CPC conversations, and I, I'm not sure that what I heard was, was opposition to the concept of doing it. But simply, um, uh, how it needs to be done to avoid getting defeated at a town meeting vote. People are very concerned the fact that, uh, if it loses at town meeting, then it gets increasingly more difficult to get it passed at a subsequent town. I guess I personally don't necessarily believe that, but that was a pretty strong comment that came out of the CPC conversation, so I think we need to understand.
Yeah, and I think a, a lot of that stems from getting everybody in line and, and having everybody marching to the same beat and saying that, you know, we're gonna be organized between advisory, select board, capital, you know, rec schools. Um, on, on making sure that we're not, we're, we're doing a good job of our capital forecasting and that we're identifying early projects that might be CPA eligible, maybe even coming years ahead of time to CPC to discuss them, you know, working with the coalition. You know, that kinda thing to, 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 you know, kinda put that process in place. Cause in the past, they've come and said, hey, does anybody have any projects? And then there's, you know, nothing, and then something comes out at the last minute or, or whatever. But I think, you know, proving that we have a firm policy process um, and that we can follow to, to make sure we, we actually put forth things that would uh, offset the taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there any portion of the contemplated nearie building project that could be CPA eligible? Because I think that. Eligible, because I think that, that could be one of the most tangible selling points of why you'd want to do it this fall.
It's a timely question, Andrew, um. The near rebuilding committee met on Monday, Andrew Faff and I are on that committee and for the first time, it looks like. We're heading toward possibly locating a new school on the same, almost on the same footprint as a current school. That is tearing down the current building and putting the new school there, whether it's a two grade, a four grade. Which means the fields that are currently next to near, which, which we have the two town meetings on, would still be left intact. Now, at the meeting, I know, I don't remember anything being wrong with those fields, you know, they, they worked fine for our meetings, but Jason Olinowski, um, said that those fields need work. So that would be one section, um, playground, um, whatever. So there are, there is aspects that committee or that project that would qualify as CPA, um, projects.
And Andrew, we kind of asked the, the consultants to kind of come up with a list of things that may be, you know, the playground at the, at school. Um, you kind of like some of the alternative funding sourced things. Um, you know, like the auditorium that we're talking about for near. Um, you know, maybe a town use thing because it's not reimbursed by MSBA, maybe it's a separate, you know, kind of a standalone thing. Um, but so kind of trying to piecemeal them together to see what the funding sources could be, uh, for parts of that project.
Is it true that MSBA does not reimburse for playing fields?
They reimburse for site costs, Sam, they don't, they don't get specifics, they, they give us, um, it used to be eight percent, it looks like it's ten percent now. But the projected site cost currently with the budget we have are already over ten percent. So they're done, look like there's gonna be any money left from that reimbursable bucket, um, to use to upgrade the fields.
So that's a good.
They don't let you use it for like lighting or stands or like, it would just be like actual field, you know, greeting.
But to Andrew's point, that could be a real selling piece to push for this.
Sure. Um, so if, if the groups tonight decide to take the next step, which is to sit down with CPC and really go through this, have a good. Um, honest, um, coherent discussion, then it sounds to me, I, I think what I do is talk about the, um, plan or talk about the process. But also then talk about the mechanism to get it to the ballot. Sam, you, you implied that we're going through town meeting, you don't have to go through town meeting, you can get signature, so that would have to be discussed too as part of it too.
About three hundred and fifty signatures, which is easy.
But you'd have to have somebody lead that charge to, to get those signatures.
So, uh, unless anybody objects, my recommendation for next step is Kathy, why don't you and I try to meet with CPC again? Or meet with Ben, um, and try to have the conversation of, of. That advisory and select board at least like to restart that conversation, especially in light of the near project and other projects to. See what their thoughts are and whether or not it makes sense.
Does anyone have any issue with that plan?
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay. So I, I don't think we've got a vote on saying, yes, go, go to the next step, go sit down with CPC then come back to us.
Yeah, I think we got our marching orders.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the potential to increase the CPA surtax? All right, so the next item that we want to talk about since we're again both together and take advantage of this is. Starting the discussion on potentially creating a new stormwater enterprise fund. Andrew Faff has done a whole lot of, he's, he's done a lot of reading and calculations of this, I'm going to turn this one over to Andrew to explain what this would entail. And why we'd want to do it.
Yeah, so I've been, there's kind of two pieces to it, um. Originally when I looked at this, it was the town of Westford and there's a lot of good documents and I can send some stuff around, but they did a good presentation at town meeting. Creating a stormwater enterprise fund i- isn't really that the goal, the goal is how do you create it and fund it, right? And so you could fund it via regular, you know, regular taxes. Um, you could do, uh, taxes and fees, you could do an investment fund, which would charge basically a percentage. Um, my suggestion and with a lot, some other communities are starting to do, Westboro, uh, just did it. Um, is charge a stormwater usage fee and. Um, why that i- is important is it basically ties your stormwater cost to the amount of impervious surface your property has. So if you have open space, you don't pay any, um, bill for, for that and, and basically. Um, what you would probably do is include it in the water bill or, or the tax bill, um, would include your, uh. Stormwater usage bill, basically. Um, and, and so other towns are basically calculated based upon your percentage of total stormwater usage. The, the good part about this is it goes to any, any property in town, so commercial, residential and nonprofit. That would, it would be assessed to be just like if, you know, the nonprofits used, uh, water. Um, so the benefit is it, it's still the same cost, it doesn't save the town any money, but it, it shifts by my calculation roughly about thirty percent of the burden. From residential to commercial and, and, um, nonprofit and industrial. Um, and, and I think, you know, as we talked with Bill Condiff and on some of the culvert work that he, he is looking to do and. Um, some of the aging infrastructure in town, uh, we also have a new MS four state stormwater permit. Um, that has some pretty sizable, uh, goals in it that we're supposed to meet over the next, uh, few years. That it looks like there's gonna be some costs associated with stormwater and historically we've just included them in our projects, right? When we do, you know, uh, road project, there's drainage or whatever and we just include it in there. Um. It basically would be like we have the water enterprise fund and a portion of a truck goes to water and a portion goes to TPW, there'd be another bucket for. Stormwater, um, and we could assess the, and break up the cost that way. Um, and then the, the costs get assessed, um, by your total impervious surface of the total. Um, but I think for me, it's, what we don't have yet is from both Bill and Melissa Danza. Um, conservation in terms of what stormwater costs, um, we're forecasting out in terms of a capital. Um, I think when I was looking at Westford's, um, their total. Total stormwater valuation was like about a hundred and fifty million dollars for their whole infrastructure, right? So, you know, it's a significant portion of the town's infrastructure, I don't know what South Bros would be, but that's kind of what we would want to have prior to go into. Town meeting or anywhere, um, to talk about it, but. It basically isolates it, spreads the cost from the residential to the other, um, classes.
Andrew, excuse me, does that include the building footprint or just the pavement?
Uh, it includes any impervious surface, so it'd be the, the pavement, the building footprint, pathways, swimming pools. Um, any of that kind of mission, and we actually did a survey, if people, um, remember, we had a, um. MVP grant, uh, mass, uh, vulnerability, um, grant a couple of years ago where the town was actually surveyed for impervious surface. So we have the data, um, on every property and how much impervious surface each one has. Um, so it's pretty easy to calculate, um, the largest being the book depository and some of the others, um. Commercial properties, the office buildings are the largest, obviously. Impervious surfaces.
Andrew, I'm part of a couple of regional groups and I've heard folks, Westboro and Wellesley talk about it, Wellesley just instituted it. They're pretty excited about it, so there's maybe a good case study as well to see how they run it. So it's, it seems to be pretty popular these days and many people.
And it seems to be that it actually is driving, you know, some thoughts about, you know, trying to, how do we have, uh, pervious asphalt or. You gravel driveways versus asphalt or concrete, so it's, it kind of, um, gets people thinking when they're, when they're doing things that. Hey, maybe there's another way to do it because then I'm getting this fee, um, that would save me money, I mean, not a lot of money, the fees usually aren't, aren't, aren't huge. But, um. The real question is, is the amount of money that we could put into this enterprise fund, that's already part of our budget and it's being spent anyway. And it's part of every project we do with the DPW, et cetera, large enough to warrant the overhead from. You know, Brian's team, et cetera, to, to do the billing and then send out the bills and follow ups and et cetera. Um, I think is the only real, uh, outstanding part for me is that part.
So how do we pay for them now, this now, if we don't have this fund, it's just, we're not.
It's either, uh, it's either a capital item or it's part of the regular operation.
Absorbs most of it, we also believe that there is going to be a significant increase in the, these costs. Because of the covert issues that Bill kind of has identified, if anybody bounces over the one on Willow Road, um, every morning. Um, I'm on the way up to Newland Turner Center like I do, that one is complicated, he thinks that is multi-million dollars to fix. He's in the process of, um, getting the engineering done on that one, so these costs could be larger than they have been, given what he's telling us. We don't know, so the amount of money that a resident would save will depend on what the total costs are and we don't know what they are right now. So the goal tonight is just again to see if there is a strong appetite from these two groups to take it a step further. And really start, um, rolling up our sleeves and seeing what, what might be saved by the average house if we were to do this. Real estate.
I said, that's the part we need to be crystal clear on, because right now. We don't, that charge is, is hidden somewhere else in the budget. Right, no one sees that, you're taking something that's already part of the overall taxes that people are already complaining are too high, you're pulling it out and giving them. Their own, a separate charge, so it looks like even though it's saving them money, perhaps it's, it's costing, you know, showing up is something they didn't see before. And they see it as an extra charge and that may not go well.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's like CP, CPA and CPC, it's only valid if there's an offset. Marcy, go ahead.
More than an equal offset too, so, you know, again, we're hoping that some of the real estate tax burden gets shifted to the commercial. And not for profit, um, um.
Uh, I had one question, Andrew, I don't know if the other towns have already, uh, identified this. If there's a point in time assessment of impervious surface that we already have, what's the interval for reassessment? And who would do that, would that be contracted out then or would that require more employees later down the road?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I've seen and obviously we would have to develop our own processes, you, you can basically do an abatement. Most of the towns have either one or a couple of tranches for residential. So they'll say, okay, all residential, your bill is, you know. You know, as long as you have impervious surface, that your bill is sixty dollars a year or whenever it would be, right, it's relatively low. Um, or, you know, they have two different levels, residential one, residential two, and they kind of group people together, uh, which kind of takes away the noise of like, oh, I made my deck smaller. Um, or I did this and, and therefore, you know, I, I come out and remeasure that. Um, that, I think they have, some of them have an, uh. Abatement process, especially on a commercial side, because that calculation for impervious surface is done, you know, in, in, in the planning board process. Or in the ZBA process and your permitting process, that's a calculation you needed to do for your stormwater already. Um, so that's known, so if it's a new property, basically you, you'd use that. Um, and then you can, you know, we could do another, um, they basically use, use a plane to do the, and, and they use a plane to do the. Um, aerials and then they can use the aerials, they use a software to basically calculate the impervious and. Um, Melissa did a pretty good presentation on it about a year and a half ago to show what the data looked like and, and what we can discern from it, so it was pretty cool. Um, but we could update that, you know, every five years or so, um, just to, just to do it, but. Um, my thought process was, once we have the data, any new commercial properties or large ones that want to fight the actual bill that they get. Um, you just have to show the calculations, um, and then, uh, any new properties, we could just add to the database based upon their permits.
Can I just jump in here for, um, for two seconds? I'm, I'm reading tonight in Bloomberg that twenty-five percent of the, uh, office buildings which are now unoccupied, the debt on them is coming like. Totally due shortly, and I'm thinking of Route Nine, it's all, almost all the impervious surface there is empty office buildings. What is this town gonna look like in five years as far as that's concerned? I mean, I, I, I think stormwater. I think imper, I think this is a great idea because we have a million culverts that are gonna fall apart, but I'm also thinking that all along Route Nine is gonna get way different. In five years.
Yeah, I mean, there's a push to take commercial, uh, commercial real estate and office buildings, converting them to housing, et cetera, but that wouldn't lower necessarily your total. Impervious surface, it's just changing the use type.
Do you think that's what's, I mean, this is like off topic, but do you think that's what's gonna happen along Route Nine? Where's your ruby in your forehead, Andrew, on this one, what do you think? I mean, look at it.
If I had that crystal ball, I, I'd be in a different business.
Okay, all right, I'll be quiet now, but I'm just saying, I, I think this is a good idea, but I think, I think the town's gonna morph along nine a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and Larry?
Yeah, I was wondering if, if we were to do something like this, whether it would make sense to consider, uh, basically a deductible amount. Say, I don't pick a number, five hundred square feet, a thousand square feet, uh, which would have a number of effects, I think. First is it would actually help drive more of the cost towards the commercial space. Um, number one, number two is it probably make it more acceptable to residents. Um, and number three is it might actually substantially reduce the number of residents that actually have to get billed for it. Which might take the load, some of the load off of actually billing, you know, if twenty-five percent of the residences fall below. The, the deductible amount, then you don't have to bill those people at all, so it, it could have a number of desirable effects. Um, if, if that, something like that made sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly worth looking at, kind of like the first hundred thousand dollars of the CPA is exempt.
Yeah, something like. Take a reasonable number, you know, average driveway is, you know, twenty feet by twelve, so there's two hundred and fifty feet, plus a house is another. Thousand feet, so, you know, maybe a thousand square feet's a reasonable deductible or something like that.
Larry, I mean, one thing where I, I see, um, could be a model for this is like how, um. Water rates are set where on an annual basis, you know, the select board has, we usually, usually take two meetings to do it. To determine the water rates for the upcoming fiscal year and there's actually a consultant that, I mean, there, there's an element of, it's an enterprise fund, so you need to. Project out, um, what capital expenses are coming up, et cetera. But there, you know, there, there's, there's, they can come up with all sorts of different permutations of numbers that strike the appropriate balance between. Um, you know. Putting too much of the burden on a just a ordinary residential user. And then not kind of over penalizing, um, um, uh, uh, shifting, shifting the, the balance to. Commercial, but not overly so, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways you could do this.
I agree with you, Andrew, um, that, all right, AD, um, that we need to do this carefully and cautiously. Look at what other towns have done, they've done this first, get the, get their war stories, um, I, I don't know what the other select board members, um. Want to do, but I'd like to see this at least go to the next step and is this something, Andrew, that advisory could take on? Um, and do the research and come back to select board, um, at some point. If, and there may not be enough time to get this, um, you know, we, we've got a placeholder on the warrant, um, for the fall, just in case, um, but we don't have to rush this, so maybe.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, the question is whether or not it's similar to CPA surcharge in which, you know, maybe this is sponsored by Concom. Or, uh, you know, Public Works Planning Board or wherever, the new Public Works Advisory Committee, you know, if that ever, it gets created. Um, you know, they would sponsor it, kind of a thing, and we would more do the research, but I think in terms of. You know, I've certainly done enough research and could, could work with Bill and Trent and Brian and Carla to understand. Uh, if we can isolate some of the costs, um, you know, come up with some kind of a forecast and, and run some of the numbers to see if it would make sense or not.
And Andrew, maybe do some permutations, um, using some of the suggestions that Larry just made as far as having, you know, so much exempt. Um, maybe even what I think, um, Andrew was headed toward a tiered structure, you know, the, the bigger than pervious, you know, the, the higher you go. Um, select board could, select board could certainly sponsor the articles, I'm not worried about that. But we just need to have a lot more information to understand whether this is really worth pursuing.
Andrew, our previous town planner, Varyacoleus, did a study with consultants in two. Andrew, our previous town planner, Varyacoleus, did a study with consultants in two thousand eight on this. Did you, have you seen that?
No.
I'll send you a copy of it. It's interesting. But again, they were looking at it then and um, you know, for whatever reason, didn't go very far, but some maybe some useful context.
That's good. So I think, does anybody object with me kind of starting to collect some more data? To see if we get, we can get a substantial enough of a pool of funds that it's worth at least. Pursuing and then starting conversations up with Conservation Commission or whoever else that would be a stakeholder. But start doing the analysis and the data gathering.
That sounds good.
It's good.
Andrew, would part of that be like for an ordinary just road project where? Part of the, okay.
So right now, when we do a road project, like a portion would be the Water Enterprise Fund. A portion would be against stormwater now, and then a portion would be like the highway. So when you remember when we said the DPW budget, there's like six, seven cemetery highway water, you know, there's all the different buckets, so there would be another one. For stormwater.
Uh to to calculate the amount of um, you know. Stormwater, um you know, money we're spending right now. For the road, in terms of determining what percentage of the road project goes to stormwater versus. It's really just kind of an educated guess, right?
We it's probably detailed enough in the bid documents, right, that we, you you can see how many culverts were being added, how many storm drains. How much, you know, uh excavation was needing to be done for the wa- for those lines versus say a water line. You know, all that kind of stuff is part of usually the, the, I mean, I know, you know, the, some of that, a lot of the. The one of the reasons why I brought this up too is is there's a concern right now that the majority or a significant portion of the homes. Were built in the early nineties in Southborough. We had the big population boom in the early nineties. And uh most of the drainage was done with corrugated metal drain pipes, which have about an average life of thirty years. So a lot of those right now are failing, um they've rusted through um and are gonna need to be replaced. Um Bill was able to get a grant for a camera to inspect a lot of those, but my concern and and feeling is that it. He's gonna find a lot of issues when he starts inspecting a lot of our culverts and a lot of our our drainage things. Um which then means that if we replace the roads, we're gonna have an issue. So the idea is to, as part of. The beta work on on all the road conditions to understand all the drainage underneath, what the conditions are. Um so you can kind of do combo of road with, you know, stormwater at the same time and kill two birds with one stone.
Okay.
We've we've done, we've done a lot of paving over the years over bad stormwater that we didn't really know was an issue.
Which Bill has pointed out to us that he he agrees with that statement and would like to not do that going forward. Okay, so it sounds like we've got general agreement to um basically task um advisory with um. Rolling up your sleeves and coming forth with some more data to see whether this is worth pursuing. Okay. All right, so the last item, um I just wanted advisory to to know what is at least um tentatively planned. For the warrant on September thirtieth, so the special town meeting September thirtieth. Um Carrie Ford night would be October first, starts at seven o'clock, goes to eleven o'clock um for both nights if we need them. Centrepiece is gonna be the MBTA um article um to to add the districts to comply with MBTA Act. Um we also believe at this point that there will be an article that deals with the regional. Um regionalization of the emergency dispatch operation um. At this point, so those are kind of the two subsequent stuff, but Mark is gonna go ahead and read to you what we've at least listed. So we've at least, we're on the same page as far as what we believe is gonna be on there.
Sure, so uh uh Select Board had talked about um potential articles. Again, as Kathy said, the MBTA communities. Um is going to be the the centerpiece, um the uh we did engage in a public safety staffing study. So any um any things that um come out of that study, uh the board may look at implementing. Um you know, in terms of any positions um that are recommended. Uh again, the feedback for Regional Emergency Communication Communication Center proposal. Uh funding for the Atwood site cleanup, um with the board to take it a look at at um. Um you know, doing some um some housing on that uh former Atwood uh site. And, you know, we found there's some contamination and uh we may need to take a look at um appropriating some funds to help clean that site up. Uh increasing the bonding amount for Breakneck Hill Farm Dump Mediation. Um that, uh if you remember, we appropriated about two point two million uh bonding authorization for the project. And there's been some additional issues uh with asbestos on the site. Um I give kudos to Melissa Danza, working with DEP on that. But um there will be some additional bonding authorization that will need to be um uh added to the original. In order to complete the project. Uh looking at the CPA surcharge uh from one percent to three percent, which we did discuss this evening. Uh restructuring the Affordable House Trust Fund Committee and SHOFC. Um some amendments to the um to the SAP bylaw. Uh some things that uh some minor items that personnel board uh needs to do, which they've looked at. Uh more classification of positions uh than anything else. Um looking at changing the date requirements for annual town meeting. Uh establishing a process for transferring affordable housing funds from CPA to Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. On annual basis, this is a conversation the board has um been uh trying to have with CPC and 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 that. Article will be predicated on that. There um would need to be some uh some funds to help um clean up some anomalies. With the um with with some of the transition uh uh that the SAP bylaw created with the with the new pay grid. A couple of things that that we just need to to tighten up, that money's gonna come from overlay, so it's not gonna have any impact on tax rate. Uh potential of adding hours to the EDC coordinator position uh was something else that was discussed. Uh and finally, um the last thing I have on the list was amending the Pilot Committee. Um bylaw to reduce the membership from seven to five members, so um pretty administrative article.
Last one was requested by the Chair, the Pat of the Pilot Committee, Patty Fiori, so.
So how many articles is that?
About a dozen.
Which is pretty typical. There was a dozen on the one that we did November first of two thousand twenty-one, where the downtown district was the centerpiece.
It sounded like more than that, that's fine. So that's why I wasn't bad, I was. Having nightmares of another thirty article. Or two days, so uh.
And Mark, reminder, ready for the date?
Yeah, the uh so so Monday, September thirtieth, uh seven PM, Trotter Auditorium. Uh and um the October first would be the second night, uh if we need two nights.
Would we have cat, cat, who knows, would we have certified free cash by then?
Yes, we will.
If we need it.
Oh, I said that too fast, September thirtieth. I said it too fast, possibly, possibly. Is Brian still on there?
No, that's why.
Oh, the, so I'm gonna take it back, Andrew. I said it too fast, possibly.
Yeah, I I I think I think that's a stretch. It it. It it could be, it could be a matter of days, um you know, either side of the date.
So the point Andrew's trying to make, if we've got it certified, we could use that that free cash to fund anything that is money related. Um on these articles instead of increasing the budget for fiscal year twenty-five.
Right.
So TBD, Andrew. Okay, all right, so that's it. We will keep everybody posted um as far as any changes to that. Um and again, it's very nice to see everybody.
Thank you. So um for advisory, we'll stay on and select board will drop and then we'll just handle um. Doing a couple administrative things, our minutes and officers, et cetera.
Sam, can you make a motion to adjourn Select Board?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Marguerite.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
And Coke is I four zero. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right.
I'm gonna exit then, Andrew. I mean, just made you the host.
Perfect. Be even as have a night.
Good night.
Claire over. All right, so let's start with our minutes from February, which I'm sure everybody is. Remembers like like yesterday. I'll start with the thirteenth. I only had one edit, Claire. Online, uh fourth page, line thirty-three, uh I think you just spelled Larry's last name with a U instead of an E.
Oh, sorry, Larry.
No worries.
I have one before that.
Yeah, are you talking about, I'm sorry, which night are we on here?
Uh, two thirteen.
Two thirteen, okay, chronologically, thank you.
On on line nine.
Yeah.
Please add my name is not present. I'm nowhere listed at all and I was not there, so.
Oh, okay. Know what happens when you.
When I'm not there, you forget about me, it's fine.
All right, um any other edits? Is there a motion to approve the two thirteen twenty-four advisory committee minutes amended?
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote, Marcy. Larry.
Aye.
Howard.
I'm staying.
Tim.
Aye.
And Andrew is I. So four oh one. Next up, the two twenty minutes. I didn't have, did anybody have any edits? I didn't have.
I didn't see.
Good job, Claire. Uh is there a motion to approve the two twenty twenty-four advisory committee minutes um without edits?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Tim.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Howard.
Aye.
Marcy.
Aye.
And Andrew is I five oh. Last but not least, two twenty-eight, and anybody have any edits? The only one I had.
It's all news.
Claire, um line one thirty-eight.
Yeah.
I think you can delete which, I think you hit, you know, that which, I just, just that is fine.
Thank you.
I don't think I had any other ones. That's it. And Claire, some of these were all on through all the votes and stuff, so thank you for. Doing all the work to capture that.
Old news again.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to approve? The the two twenty-eight advisory minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second, there's a second, all right. Howard.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Marcy. And Andrew is I, awesome. Thanks, everybody, getting that caught up.
We're starting off. Yeah, right.
New year, we're 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 good. Um now that it is a new year, um we should do our annual vote on officers. I'll start with anybody like to be chair.
You can raise your hand, Andrew.
I'm hap- I'm happy to serve in the capacity if if nobody else wants it, but I'm certainly happy to let anybody else uh enjoy this position.
I nominate. The chair.
Okay. Um any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Howard.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Marcy.
Aye.
And Andrew will abstain, the four oh one.
So there was a motion there, did I miss that?
Yeah, most, um Tim nominated me for chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Got it.
Um so Marcy is our current vice chair. Well, Marcy, are you interested in doing it again, or does anybody else have an interest in in the position?
I didn't know we were talking about this tonight, but I'd be happy if anyone wanted to step forward and serve in the role. Uh we can rotate on and off, so feel free if anyone would like to take a, you know, a year or more.
But are you happy to do it again? Because I thought you did a great.
I'm always, I'm always happy to do it again, but thank you, thank you, Howard, but um if anyone else is interested, feel free.
I nominate Marcy.
Uh second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Larry.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Howard.
Aye.
Andrew is I, Marcy. You can vote or abstain.
I'll say aye, it's fine.
Yeah. In the past, we had a secretary, um I've just been basically working with Claire to get the minutes done and and really it's not additional effort. So unless anybody really wants to take that role, I'm happy just to keep working with Claire. It's not very burdened, so she does all the heavy lifting. All right, we'll keep it with two positions. Um excellent. Um any other business properly brought forth, so. I don't have anything, uh the only other thing is is update um on the Neri. School committee work, um building committee like our usual business. Just that that process keeps going, um if you haven't, um watching the the last Neri Building Committee meeting was is good and and kind of feel. Um look at some of the documentation, um it's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of work that's been done. Um a lot of challenging um what they've been working on and the costs. Um the size has come down quite a bit. Um we've, I've been, they they've kind of moved from the site closer to the wetlands where the fields are now. To actually being able to put it um maybe directly on where Neri is today, uh which I think is an improvement, better soil and more compacted, et cetera. Uh so that should be a significant cost, still waiting on final estimates, um which will come in the next uh few weeks or so. Um timeline is still pretty aggressive, um I had pushback in one of our earlier meetings that. At this point in time, I don't feel comfortable making the decision in August, um which option we would bring forth to the town. Um and and gave a list of kind of demands that I would, information that I would need, one being like a perk test of the property to make sure that it could sustain a. Uh septic system, um they're hoping to do that in the next couple of weeks. Um so there's a few things that that uh I asked for personally that I'd like to see, but um that process is ongoing and. Uh if you have a chance to follow the meetings, uh they're pretty. Pretty laborious.
So since I haven't caught up on them yet. How does the size of the school play in with this? Forgive my candor, but the ridiculous empty MBTA thing and how many additional students that's gonna bring in.
The size doesn't, um so the the amount of students that are being used for the calculation um had been done on two different. Uh demographic studies, um MBTA was not necessarily factored in. Um but they, it is a pretty conservative number. Um in terms of the amount of students that they're, they kind of use for each grade. And the the way that MBTA is looking right now in terms of the properties that um planning board uh is putting forth. Doesn't look like it's going to be a large increase in population anytime soon. Uh I mean, one, one of the properties is Madison Place, right? That would allow them to add, I think, ten units. Would allow them to add, I think, ten units. So of the seven hundred or eight hundred units that are part of the MBTA. You know, my estimate is maybe in the next five years, you might see. Eighty, maybe a hundred units.
A little more, but that's, you know, that if if the the ability to build is there, the builders are gonna dive on it and they're gonna build it. So and the school is going to. Serve this town for a very long time, it will. See that entire, if that goes through, you will see that entire build out happen. In the time the school is gonna happen and the school needs to accommodate that.
Well, I think the interesting, the interesting part right now is. One of the reasons why they can accommodate building the school on the nearie site is they can actually accommodate the current two grades. At the other schools, so there is significant amount of space in our other schools existing. And then this school would be. Larger than the existing nearie. Which are and would not no longer house the um superintendent's office, which took um.
Right.
About. Six classrooms worth. So we we're adding fourteen, so it's same fourteen classrooms right now, five, you know, five thousand square feet of it, roughly five or six classrooms worth. Is occupied by the superintendent's office, which it no longer will, so again, there's pretty significant. You know, availability at each one of the schools. But.
Andrew, at the public, at one of the public forums, somebody asked that question and Jason said there's. Capacity at the schools as they are, which I was surprised by. I I can't recall how much he said, but it was still surprising to me.
Yeah, it it seems like we could, we could probably absorb it, but. Probably a twenty or thirty percent increase in in the population and. It seemed, which was surprising to me, but again, that's more of a. Superintendent's bailiwick than advisories, but I I. I wasn't too concerned with the numbers. Thanks. Alright, and we can have a certainly, um I think it's worth having a meeting. Once we kind of finalize the. The options, certainly prior to town meeting to go over all the idiosyncrasies of it, because it's a lot of moving pieces to it. The costs are gonna be significant and it's gonna put our. Town finances, finances in a in a real serious bind, depending on which option we pick, so advisory certainly needs to. Understand all that and the impact of our bond rating, etcetera, what this would do. Alright, um. Anything else? Um, public comment? Alright, uh seeing none, and I have motion to adjourn. Marcy.
Hi.
Larry.
Aye.
Howard.
Aye.
Tim.
Bye.
Andrew is I, thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, everyone, good night.